Everyone, and welcome to the December 12th, 2023 work session of the City Council. And please let the record reflect that all council members are present, with the exception of council member Nadolski and Lopez, but I'm assuming they will be here shortly. Yeah, at least. And then we'll do a quick review of the agenda. And just a reminder that at 5:15, we'll be closing this work session a little early and have the reception for the 10th anniversary of the College Town Coalition, which is exciting. And everybody's welcome to stay for that. And then we have the special city council meeting, starting at 6 o'clock. It should be a really fun evening. We have first the recognitions of Weber State University's volleyball team, which is amazing. And then we have the 10th anniversary of the College Town Coalition, the signing of the recommitment. So there'll be a whole kind of ceremony there where I'll do introductions and we'll have comments by Bill Cook, the board, Director Board Administrator of the Weber State Office of Community Development, Brad Martinson, the President of Weber State, Mike Caldwell, the mayor, and Ben Nadolski, the mayor-elect. And then we'll all, then we'll sign. That'll be orchestrated for us. And then we thought it might be a good idea to move the public comments before number four. Because we don't have like public input on those reports from the administration. We thought, and the the justice court recertification, so that way we can take all comments, public comments before those topics, if that sounds good to everybody. Any concerns? Okay, then we'll do those. And so it's just a really fun evening of appointing people and having celebrations. And we'll have those two appointments, and then we will have the proposed Ogden City Justice Court recertification. Any questions? Hey, great. Well, I'm very excited to welcome Chris Parker from the Give group to talk with us about, you know, this continuing conversation we're having about affordable housing and homeownership. And so we invited Chris to come, and you can step right up here to this seat if you'd like to. Come on up. Welcome. Ooh, I like your tie. Thanks so much for joining us.
Oh, well, honestly, thank you for having me. I'm always happy to have an excuse to come up. Give was actually born in Ogden. For those who weren't around 15 years ago in this position, a bunch of plunky 20-something with some sort of vague idea that we wanted to help the world. It's kind of embarrassing in retrospect, but generally speaking, we started in Ogden and grew almost accidentally into a housing company in a series of housing companies and nonprofits. So I thought we'd do just a really quick reintroduction, maybe, of who Give is and some of what we do throughout the state now. So do I just click through? Oh, fancy. Okay. So yeah, I mean, my name's Chris Parker. I'm the Executive Director of two nonprofits and a beneficial for-profit group that basically was formed in order to fund the other nonprofits. We have currently what we call a housing plus model, which provides lower income, middle income, and upper income housing, but does so with added benefits beyond what we saw the market providing. The first of these entities, Give Development, is that beneficial corporation. And so it basically ties itself, for lack of a better word, to make sure that the other nonprofits never have any operational needs that they have to fundraise for. We actually started as a nonprofit in Ogden. We were called Sprout Utah back in the day, which is always some sort of agrarian reference when you're a budding nonprofit, I think, that you start out with. But we very quickly found that our success as a fundraising organization came at the expense of other nonprofits in the ecosystem. If we got a grant, somebody else did not get a grant. And so Give Development was formed as a way of taking projects that still did good, but having those that were revenue-producing be what made the nonprofit not have to fundraise, and then it could do its own good by itself. So this was actually the first thing we ever built as Give. It's on Jefferson Avenue, some of you might be familiar with the building. And at the time, Jefferson Avenue, the city had a very large initiative that was trying to kind of regain the vitality of that street. The question is, if you want to rebuild in a very historic district, how do you do so appropriately with the surrounding neighborhood, while also providing some density? So this house looks like, you know, an older home. It's designed to do that and fit in well. It's actually a triplex. So it has two affordable housing units in the top floors, and it has one very large market rate unit on the main floor. But the approach to the street was as a single-family home. You walk in that main unit's front door, and the other ones approach from the side. And so again, it's been quite some time since this building was built, but that sort of initiative about what fits in the community well, that also provides a sort of housing and density that's needed in that community. How can we go ahead and merge those two? These days, we do, we do some different things. So we work with a lot of cities, municipalities, states, counties, to go ahead and help figure out what they want to do, or not figure out what they want to do, but take the best intentions of these organizations and help realize them in a way that's built. So a recent project in Salt Lake City, they had assembled this land at kind of the edge of their civic campus. So Salt Lake City's, you know, kind of main headquarters buildings is this big grassy area. You've got the public library. And then they had aggregated land on this site. And what Salt Lake wanted to do was build a site that was for everyone, literally top to bottom of their entire city in a way that you could live there, you could work there, you could recreate there, regardless of your income. And so we were able to take that want and build a series of buildings around them that are currently known as Exchange. This building's called Avia. This building is 80% very high-end market and 20% affordable at 50% AMI. And it's the first building of its type in Utah that proves that you can get true market rate rents in a building that also includes affordable housing. That has not been demonstrated very often in our state, and it certainly hasn't been demonstrated using a 4% tax credit, which is far shallower subsidy than a 9% tax credit. So this is the first building in Utah that didn't go 60% AMI with that, with that tax subsidy. Again, the proof of this building is that you can have something that anybody in the city would live in too that also provides affordable housing. I think our top unit rents in that, in that building for somewhere around $4,000 a month. And I think our bottom unit rents in the 500s. And it works. People would say it doesn't work, a mix of two populations. It happens all along the coasts. You absolutely can have great market housing along with affordable housing. This is the back of our Maya Building in that aggregation. This is 126 micro-units. And this building is one-third at 40% AMI, a third at 80% AMI, and a third at market rate, again, using a 4% tax credit. That, again, is a tax credit that has not been used on anything but 60% AMI in the state. And so this proves that you could have people at 40% AMI served by a very shallow subsidy, but also, again, blending very uniquely with, with market and 80% AMI seamlessly. Both of these buildings filled up almost immediately. Avia rented 150 units in its first month. And so you know, that sort of idea about everybody living there truly is. There are voucher holders that are directly out of homelessness that live in this building. There are also people that can afford $4,000 a month in rent. On the front of that building is the shop. So the shop is 30,000 feet of co-work space, our most expensive unit in this, in this co-work space. Just don't have an interior shot, is $11,000 a month for an office. And our least expensive entry into the building is $200 a month. If you're a resident, I think it's $300 a month if you're not. Very high-end, very artistic co-work space. It's 99% full. The city actually, while they're doing renovations, has moved their offices into the building as well. But again, gives that sort of, hey, you know, the entirety of Salt Lake could, could exist in this building and get the same optimization. And in aggregation, you end up with something that Salt Lake wanted, which was 17,000 feet of retail, a food hall, substantial office that leased up during COVID and still was able to hit 99% occupancy, which is the opposite story of almost all office in the state, and something that very much fit on their Fourth South corridor. So that's something that Give Development might do. Now, most RFPs look something like this. You have somebody that wants to do some good, call it a city, and they've got some land or they've got some money, and they want to put out an RFP for a development organization to come in and help them do that good. They trade their land or subsidy to a developer. The developer puts out maybe something like affordable housing. And this works well enough. And this is 95% of the RFPs that happen in Utah. The trouble is, is that our population on the Wasatch Front is expected to double in the next 30 or 40 years. And so if there's an output of public assets that ends with something good, you're going to have a reduction in the amount of assets you have over time, but you're going to have a doubling of need as your population grows. So what Give Development does, that a couple of other organizations do as well, is we actually almost never accept free land from communities, and we almost always provide a portion of that back. So a deal that we would do now would be paying a city full value for their land and giving them, say, 50% of all revenues from that building, so that their war chest over time to address this program grows as their population grows. And so for Give Development, at least of these three models, that's something that it would do. There's another model that it recently is championing that's almost a 40-40-20 model as well, where the developer would receive 40% of the proceeds of the project. The city would receive 40%, but the direct neighborhood would receive the other 20%.
Chris, do you mind talking a little bit more into the mic? People online are having a hard time hearing. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
Technology.
And what that does is, I mean, NIMBYs, depending on whether it's your neighborhood that's being NIMBY, or generally, you know, caste dispersion, has people that just don't want development. But they're usually pretty rational, actually. Most development does nothing for the actual existing neighborhood that's in there. It adds traffic, it adds other sort of negative things, but it's not for them. But a 40-40-20 model allows that neighborhood to get the upgraded park, to get the repeated public, you know, art access that they might not have the funding for. It gets some other asset for the neighborhood apart from just development happening on their door for three years. So that's, Give Development would more or less partner in that way. Give Communities is a 501(c)(3), and it does projects that are not revenue generating with cities. So an example is a project that we recently ribbon-cut in Tooele. What Tooele wanted to do is take what was an abandoned elementary school called Harris Elementary and convert it into something that very heartwarmingly they felt they deeply needed, which was a place to take care of their own from a homeless perspective. And so we were able to diagram what this building could be. And if you were to look at it today, you would have shelter, day services, daycare, food pantry. And then very unusually for a project of this, you also had permanent supportive housing on site. And so for a population of Tooele's, like 11,000-person population, they have one of the most complete approaches to homelessness in the Western United States. You could show up on the front door of that facility and have a permanent home you never had to move out of within a week. There's really almost nowhere in the Western US that has that. And so hats off to them for wanting this in the first place. And, you know, we were, we were happy to go ahead and make that vision happen. So on the Give Community side of these three-pronged approaches, if the city had something that it wanted that simply was not economic, and it doesn't have to be homeless-related, it could be, you know, some sort of civic service, really anything it wanted to. I mean, maybe a recreation center or something like that. Give Communities would come in and go ahead and build that either at no cost or at some shared cost with the, with the person trying to do it. And then more unusually is the Perpetual Housing Fund, which was actually born during COVID. No surprise to anyone in the room, COVID was, you know, a dominant force in, in, you know, 2021 and 22, but also was this complete annihilation of the on-ramp to the American dream for the average Utah family. Buying a home went from being something you might expect, as long as you worked hard, regardless of your field, to something that you absolutely are not expecting anymore unless you're making six digits. And so Perpetual Housing Fund looks at recreating equity generation for families that can no longer afford a home. And it does that in two main reasons. The reason it does that is this. And these numbers have gotten much worse. This is 2019 data. So the average homeowner has 40 times the net worth of the average runner, and a large portion of that net worth is the home that they reside in. Catching up, if you're not on the right-hand side now, is exceedingly hard to do. And Utah is getting far worse over time. So the percentage of Utah home sales that are affordable to the median income, median income in Weber County is not a small number, but the affordability goes down to 22, and it actually got worse in 23. And so you have something which is vitally important to being able to retire on or send your kids to college on, or really any economic thing you'd like to have in your life, just evaporating from an, from an entry level perspective. And so when you think about how we try to solve these things, at least on a federal level, we basically have three categories of people. You've got high and middle-income earners that actually, for most of the last 40 years, were the highest subsidized housing earners in the state. That, that tax deduction for your mortgage interest used to be, until we had a change in tax law under Trump, the highest single subsidy we gave as a country to housing. And we did it for good reasons. The idea is there's stability that's brought on by homeownership. And it is, it's the way that candidly, you aren't going to pay massive bills when someone's 70, 80, 90 years down the road. If you make money in your home, you don't have to make it from other social services. There's a really good reason for the government to do this. But you have this yawning middle now, where you make a little bit too much more, too much money for low-income housing subsidy, but you can't quite make enough to get into the upper-income subsidy. And you basically tread water and try to stay alive right now. And then you have low-income individuals, lower-income families and individuals that do receive some housing subsidy. That housing subsidy is very much a social safety net. It's not what you might think of as a trampoline. If you have housing that has some level of subsidy, if you take that, that, you know, bonus at your job, you might lose your housing. You might lose your food service. You might lose a host of different things. And so there's huge pressure to keep you where you are. And your ability to claw out of, of maybe the bottom third, even naturally, would be very difficult. But with those subsidies, it's actually very disadvantageous to your family in some cases to do so. And so what we try to do for Perpetual Housing Fund is solve these bottom two. One of the ways we do that is we build attached for-sale product for free. We receive no profit on these projects. And we design them such that they're affordable to, you know, middle-income or lower-income individuals. So a project like this, you know, looks like something you'd see almost anywhere, but it has a couple of key differences from a traditional townhome product. So this project has a very thin townhome product that still lives very well. It's either a four or six-bed. And then it has a newish product that we're trying to make something like a mortgage-free fourplex. So in 20 feet wide, we've developed a model that has a three-bedroom townhome on the top floors, and then has three units of kind of micro one-bedrooms on the bottom floor. And what this does is, fourplex is kind of a magic number under financing. You can get an FHA loan, same as you got on a single-family home if you have up to four units. So this allows someone to go in and get a traditional loan and have these units potentially pay their mortgage and have something like a shot at, at being able to afford a home because of these units. What it also does is it provides three affordable rental units without subsidy that go into the market as naturally a current affordable housing.
So can I ask a question about that? You might be going into, so the person that purchases this, purchases all of it and then rents out the?
Yeah, it's basically a town, a bonus townhome on the, on the end is how it's purchased. So they buy a fourplex.
Okay.
And we sell that fourplex at the average price of the single-family home in this neighborhood. And so they're getting these, these bonus units, more or less for free. Our four beds in this project will be in the twos, and we, we think we'll maybe even get one of them in the high ones, which in Salt Lake, downtown Salt Lake, there's no chance in heaven you're ever getting that.
You can't even get that in Ogden these days.
No, I mean, and honestly, Ogden's, Ogden's following Salt Lake. It isn't independent. I think where Salt Lake is today, Ogden will be very soon. And then our six bedrooms are probably in the low threes, high twos, depending on how they're, they're optioned. So to give context, on this exact block, there are currently two-bedroom townhomes going for a little less than $600,000. So we're able to provide a less expensive product, and part of that is we, we take no profit on these, completely open book. The other thing that we do is we provide a low-density condo product that's ownership, that again is, is sold at what we can build it for. So, you know, this product will take something like that townhome and something like that fourplex, and architecturally can look anything like what a community might want in it. But what it is is very different than how it is, and what it is is a way to kind of rebuild the ability of low-income or moderate-income families being able to buy a home. So that kind of handles the middle, right? If we can, if we can take kind of the power of density and its lower costs and combine that with a bunch of individual owners instead of one big apartment building owner, you can get something like affordable places to live again. For lower-income families, we have another model, and this is a project we're doing in, in Salt Lake City. It's an existing office tower. It was half-empty when we got it, and the U is actually, because they, they care about housing more than they care about office, is vacating the rest of it. What this model does, maybe I'll go to the actual model. What this model does is takes traditional affordable housing subsidies, which is usually done with low-income housing tax credits. So tax credits, very briefly, and I'm sure people at the table know this. If you take a market-rate building, you've got to have a bunch of debt, and you've got to have someone putting up a down payment on that building, more or less. And therefore, you need to cover all that debt, and you need to charge rents that can cover your debt. LITC, a low-income housing tax credits, the government puts up a certain amount of tax credits, which you then sell to banks usually. You have a big chunk of money and you have less debt. And so the LITC program is the most successful affordable housing program this country has had. And it kind of operates in this general idea. The problem with this program, and problems may be a harsh word, but how this program works is residents get affordable rent. You get this subsidy coming in from the federal government, and then investors and developers go ahead and make any sort of latent profit that that building puts off. With the idea being you have to pay developers something, otherwise they can't build anything. But that's problematic, because the residents really never get out of the cycle. That building they're living in doesn't help them economically at all, apart from cheap rent. And so what Perpetual Housing Fund does is it takes 75% of all, all proceeds on an annual basis, all proceeds on a refinance basis, all sale proceeds, and it gives those to the residents themselves, basically allowing them to accrue significant nest eggs by paying the exact same rent you would in another affordable building. And once they have a big enough nest egg, the idea is they're able to kind of hop that bar into some of the other sections of the population. So here's what it looks like on that exact project I was showing. It's a 9% deal, which basically means a more deeply subsidized deal, under 50, under 50% AMI. This building is 25 to 50% AMI, or at least it's, it's affordable units. And so the residents on the top line are putting in less than $1,000 a month in rent. And when this thing stabilizes, so not when it's been 10 years, but when this thing actually is full, we think that the inherent equity per, per unit is around $40,000. And that growth, that goes up over time as your mortgage pays down, and the building appreciates over time. And so the idea is over, over a timeframe that this building might take before it maybe would want to refinance in 10 or 15 years, you can have this growing per-unit cash flow that couples four different ways of receiving cash. The first thing that residents receive is they get an annual check. We basically, at the end of the year, project how much money the building would have made for that exact year. Chop it up, 75% goes in checks to residents. We call that rent rebate, so that it's not taxable to the resident, doesn't count as their income. And that happens. This, this model talks about when you refinance or when you sell, sell the building, kind of how much they could expect to receive on a check. We also do this prorata. So if someone has lived in a building four years and someone has lived in a building six years after that, at the end of 10 years, each party gets their prorata chunk of that equity. It's not just holding the hot potato whenever we go ahead and refinance. And that's the second way that people get revenue from this. The third way is, it's all well and good to have a big number sitting in your theoretical bank account that might cash out in 10 years. It's, it's a very good thing to do. But if your car breaks down tomorrow, it doesn't help you much to have a bit of equity in the bank. And so we take a portion of our developer fees, usually half, and we set aside a, something like a home equity line of credit that is 0% interest, and it's only paid back from your dispersals, where someone who has a enumerated emergency, like a medical event, like a car, maybe even if they want to buy a home, for a listed amount of items, they can go ahead and draw against their future equity and never pay interest on it. We'll go ahead, we know they're good for it, because we're going to be the ones paying them the money, and they can go ahead and get that emergency cash to maybe stave off them having to go to a check cashing place or missing rent. And the fourth way is, we do provide for-sale housing. So at any time, someone is able to transfer their equity and their rental building into a home. One-to-one reduction of the cost of that home is down payment. So those are the four ways that this cashes out for people. And between, you know, kind of the attached product for sale and the, call it LITC on steroids, you kind of take the entirety of a population and they're able to wealth generate, which leaves you with something like this. Happy to answer any questions.
That's amazing. And well, and I do have several questions. I'm sure other people do too. But so there's no cliff effect. That's what I'm hearing, right? So they get the money back. The cliff effect is like, if you make too much money, then you lose all of your other benefits. So that money that you're giving back to them or holding doesn't count, like for those kinds of things?
No, exactly. And it's important that it doesn't. I mean, especially in LITC, you, you could get kicked out if you make too much money. And so if you were a normal real estate investor in the market today, really one of the beauties, I mean, most people at this table probably might own a home, and the odds are that the home is worth more than you bought it for. But you're not getting taxed on the fact that that equity increased over time until you pull it out. And we're trying to create a model where the exact same thing happens for these low-income residents. And so we haven't got a private letter ruling yet, but our accountants say, well, I don't, I don't see anything about how long after you pay rent it can be till you get a rebate on that rent. So you might be able to have 10 years from now, being able to get a 30, 40, 50, $60,000 check or more, if you're in a 4% deal, and have that, as long as you paid over the course of 10 years, more than that in rent, we can call it a rent rebate for you, which is far more advantageous from an economic perspective and a tax perspective for these families than had we just given them a profit check as, as a share of a company.
Well, I'm sure other people have questions too.
So I have a couple of questions. So they don't individually own their portion. They own basically a, a share of the building, is what it kind of sounds like.
It's, it's a profit share of the building. As soon as they have a technical share, then we've got to give everyone a K1 at the end of the year, and they'll be taxed on that money as an owner in the building, which again, is still a good thing to do, but it isn't as beneficial. And it comes with a bunch of regulatory burdens. What we tried to do is take existing systems that were functioning as they were and change nothing in them, except who gets the money at the back. So no, this, at least in the last one, it's not technical ownership. There is a nonprofit called the, the Community Housing Foundation, I think. I always get the foundation wrong on that, is why I say I think. But they, they have a contractual right to receive these funds from the entity. And that nonprofit is, is directed on behalf of the tenants, and it distributes. But it's the thing that has the contractual right, not the tenants themselves to each individual share.
Sounds like that's going to get built up quickly.
Yeah, we, we had, so Salt Lake City, you know, announced a partnership with Perpetual Housing Fund for 1,000 units of rental and 500 units of ownership. And we've never done advertising, but just when that came out, we already had this building a couple of times over full. It's, I mean, there's no real downside to it. You're paying the exact same rent as affordable housing, but you're, you're generating a real nest egg. So we think it'll be very, very popular. And I mean, that makes us feel good. That's why we're doing it.
Well, that's one thing I was going to say. I think you kind of alluded to this before, but why would you do this if you're in the business of, a lot of people in the business of making money?
You know, you give, give, again, we started as a nonprofit, like most of the for-profit work that we've done directly goes to any, any, there's only one owner of Give Development, and you know, they're, they're not particularly interested in, in getting another yacht, or a yacht. So we actually add a, we have twice-a-month meetings among all kind of the Give affiliates, and we just kind of talk about what impact we can do that's a little bit more than we've been doing. And I'm going to blame this specifically on a, our youngest member named CJ, who he was seeing, you know, wave after wave of images of the apparent inequity in, in society today, regardless of how that might have come about. And he, he continued, he was like, what can we do that's more? We're housing people, but that's not solving this. And when you look at why there is socio and economic disparity among different groups. And when you look at why there is socio and economic disparity among different groups. Almost all of it comes back to economic disparity for different groups. And, and most of economic disparity comes back from homeownership disparity. The question of did your grandparents own a home tells us more about your economic future than almost any other question we could ask you. And so here we were, a rental housing provider that was, feel like we were doing a pretty good job. And yet you had this bigger problem, which we were not addressing at all, we were stabilizing people, but we weren't moving them out of needing housing subsidy in the first place. So yeah, Perpetual Housing Fund is technically a direct competitor with Give, and nobody actually makes any money on Perpetual Housing Fund, you know, its executive director gets zero dollars. But it was such an apparently needed thing to do that we thought we'd take a crack.
Question?
I, I did have a question. Went along with the first part of your presentation. You talked about these buildings that had units that were for a wide variety of income. You know, and I guess I maybe I don't know much about that, and what kind of things did you have to mitigate in order to make it work with with five hundred dollar a month units to four thousand dollar a month units? Was there anything that, that makes it work versus, or does it just work?
There's really, I mean, if you go way down the income bracket to say less than thirty percent AMI. We, we do build, our nonprofit builds a fair amount of permanent supportive housing product. We were, I think, going to be on our fifth project this year of that typology. And generally speaking, there is a lot of support needed for that demographic. Especially if they are exiting homelessness with something like a co-occurrent medical condition, be that mental or otherwise. And those buildings really do want a hundred percent on site care, twenty four hours a day for those individuals to be as successful as they can be. The difference between just someone you can talk to at eleven P M. When you're having a moment and not is the difference between you being housed and unhoused in many cases. But once you get above forty percent AMI or fifty percent AMI or sixty percent AMI. I don't think anyone really knows who's living next to them, I, I think. There's an, there's an idea, plus those AMIs are now very high, I mean, if you're a family of four, forty percent AMI is forty K, fifty is fifty K in Salt Lake, sixty is sixty K. When you kind of address who the actual family might be, someone making fifty thousand dollars versus someone making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There might be some small difference, but that difference might actually be relatively appreciated. These are both people working their butts off for their kids. And we haven't seen much in that building in Avia, we haven't seen much disparity at all among families, they're just at different stages in life. But yeah, if you're building permanent supportive housing, that, that population does not mix well with, with market rate, or at least it takes more to do it. But the services they need are not the services that the market rate needs, so as long as you're fifty, sixty, even down to forty, forty five percent AMI. I, I, I would hesitate to think that there's really much you need to do apart from provide great housing that both of them want to live in.
Do the amenities change in, in a building like that, or?
We, you know, I mean, those amenities in that building are very, very nice. You probably could rent you know, lower, lower income units with less amenitization. We haven't as a practice done that, almost all of our buildings historically have been mixed income, and they would have had amenity packages that a condo building would have had in it, candidly. That might be more our preference as an organization than absolute need to rent those units affordably. But you know, some of our staff has lived in almost every single building we've done, and that's kind of our benchmark. And I, I don't think we need to be deciding how much is enough, at least internally, that's how we feel.
I don't know if you've ever
Way to think outside the box though, that's great.
Well, the, I mean, Imagine Jefferson has really beautiful like outdoor spaces or community spaces indoors, and so people can kind of gather. And then also Project Open Eye toward that too, so, you know, they just create really great gathering places, community gardens, you know, things that anybody would want really in their community, but also the reason I really appreciate your approach is that it seems like it breeds for community building versus maybe some of the other kinds of apartments or residences we've seen that don't seem to really have that, I mean, I can't tell you for sure they don't have it, but it doesn't seem like they do, so. I just appreciate that about the different products. A lot of times they're sustainable too, right? So you're using more sustainable methods for the buildings.
We are, we, we built our last carbon emitting building seven years ago, so all of our buildings are all electric. Many of our buildings are carbon neutral, where, you know, we're, we're about to construct a building in Moab that's full net zero onsite. You know, the experience of air quality actually is based on income very differently experienced. If you're waiting, you know, thirty minutes for a bus or a train, or you're walking your kid to school instead of driving your kid to school. And it's a red air day, your throat's going to hurt, that kid's throat's going to hurt, whereas if you are of, of higher means. It's kind of an aesthetic thing, it's ugly when you have a bad air day, but you've got a filter in the front of your car to protect you from what's in the back of your car. Economically, that really does hit differently, and so air quality was something that from that lens, we started to think a lot about. And you don't get some magic bubble of good air if your building doesn't pollute around you, and so there's actually a website we've developed called Pragmatist for Clean Air that shows any developer how to, for the same price, make a zero emission electric building. Now that heat pump technology is as good as it is, you really can do that. But yeah, we, we like this model to be more or less spread everywhere, and it has. There's, there are more all electric buildings under, under construction right now in Utah than there were in the past ten years combined. I think this is something that, that's catching on, and now the technology again is, is economic enough that you really can expect someone to do it instead of just want them to do it.
Any other questions?
Can you talk a little bit about the condo piece? I think we've, we've heard from multiple places that some of the problems with condos, whether it's financing or insurance pieces, or you know, is it cash buyers that are looking at condos, or how, how are those being financed, seller financed, or? What are, what are you experiencing there? On that one project, there was a component of condos.
No, the reality is there is zero economic reason to build condos right now. If, if your goal, and, and maybe not even your goal, but your reality is to, you know, provide a return for your investors. Apartments now are worth everybody as much as condos are, and you don't have a hundred different people that have to agree on you for price three years down the road. You don't have all of the liability concerns from a design perspective and a financing perspective. Architects don't like doing condos, contractors don't like doing condos, banks don't like doing condos, the biggest thing banks took a bath on in two thousand nine was condos. Because you had all of these, I hope I can sell it later, sort of loans, and when you couldn't, you lost your shirt, whereas the market tanking for affordable, or not even affordable, but rental product happens much, much slower. And you have one relatively well-heeled developer to go after in that condition, so nobody likes the liability that comes on condos. And you mix that with them not making any more money, and you don't end up with any condos. That's never been a problem on the buy end, you can still get a loan for a condo, you can get a loan for a townhome. So here you have a disconnect between what we need for affordable ownership, which is attached dwelling, if you start any algebraic equation with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar building lot. There's no way you get to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home regardless of what you build on it. But if you start with a multifamily lot at twenty or thirty thousand dollars a door, you really have a shot of providing something like a two hundred thousand dollar, two fifty, three hundred thousand dollar product. It's the only way you can do it, but there's, there is no market incentive to do it, and so people don't. You, you kind of need to be a, a plucky nonprofit to give it a, give it a go. I say, I say that, townhomes are somewhat of the outlier here because townhomes own the land that they're under them, they're much easier to finance. But you, you have a townhome product that you, if you're able to build much more cheaply, that doesn't mean you're going to sell it much more cheaply, if you're a developer, you're probably going to get as much as you can. And you're going to get it as cheaply as you can afford to build it, and that delta ends up going to your kids' retirement instead of necessarily the people buying the townhomes. Again, I'm not demonizing market rate developers, we need as much product as we can get. We need a lot of market rate product, naturally a current affordable product today is just market and high end product from nineteen seventy and nineteen eighty. We need a lot of everything. But it, it is very difficult to have attached for sale product because there's not a really good reason to do it.
Another question? I was just going to ask a little bit about office space. We've heard lately that office space maybe isn't the best thing to be building or messing in, but what's your perspective in your project?
I, I think it depends on what, what the typology is, so our experience with the shop is, I mean, we're ninety nine percent full. Class A office space is actually done pretty well, people, there's been a flight to quality, class B and C office space is dead. It's exceedingly hard to finance office space right now, if you tried to get a refinance of any office tower right now. I think something like nine and ten CMBS loans that tried to refinance in the last quarter couldn't. That's very different than do they make money? So if the question is, should we buy in cash an office building and can we expect a return? I would say it depends on the office building, but possibly yes. If the question is, am I going to be able to get a loan on that office building in the next year or two, it'd be pretty tough.
Any other questions? Well, we certainly appreciate your time, and I appreciate your efforts as the not-for-profit and, and all the magical stuff that you all do.
Thanks so much, I appreciate the invitation.
Yeah, thank you.
I just have to say, I, I was lucky enough to listen to Chris earlier today and on a, a really great subject of art and economic development. And just really talking about, and I, I took away that, you know, art really does have an economic value in a city and it's, in, and I'm plagiarizing your words, but you know, it's really the soul of the city, and I, I think that Ogden is in a really good place. From what you were saying earlier, maybe we could be better, obviously, always can be better, but you, you did a great job, and I just appreciate you just being from this subject to that subject, and so.
Well, I'm a little biased about the art part too, so I'm on board.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you so much. Up next, we'll invite Jared Johnson, our Deputy Community Economic Director, Development Director, to talk about the airport committee ordinance. Welcome, Jared.
Thank you. Chair, members of the council, appreciate your time this afternoon, and hopefully this is a very easy, non-complicated one. But the request before you, this time for the discussion tonight is we just want to talk about you going and amending Ogden City Ordinance, specifically Title Eight, Chapter One, Section Four. And in this section M created a provision on the Airport Advisory Committee where it sunset that committee, and that sunset date was in June. June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. And so we are requesting that we remove Section M from the ordinance, that's the only really change to the ordinance, there's some other technical cleanup things. But that's really the only change to it, it's just remove Section M. And so that there is no sunset date, the, the intent was never for this to be a temporary committee. We wanted it to be long term, and so we want to just remove the sunset date provision and just make it a formal committee under ordinance long term.
Any questions?
I just wondered how we got it in there if we didn't intend it to be short term, that just seems like a serious oversight.
And I, I don't know that I have the answer to that question.
I was just thinking, I think there's a lot of committees that weren't intended to be short term, I mean, you think Christmas Village, and I think part of the, the reason there's those sunset dates is so the council can get a report. So that they're forced to come back and make a report before they get, you know, re-upped.
Then it begs the question, can we do that without a sunset provision? Can we just write that in there and that we do get an annual report or whatever? That seems like the way to, I, I agree with you that we do need the report. But maybe that's what we do with, with, with Section M here, if we just say it will require a annual report. I don't know if we can do that or not, really quickly or easily.
I believe so, yeah.
I don't remember if we've gotten a report. So maybe we should get a report before we
Maybe we should, I, well, I, I don't know if it needs to be annual, I, and I just threw that out, just kind of totally, but but, but you do need to, to have some kind of a contact with, with any committee that's doing your business for you. Airport is no different. You know, I think where they are only required to meet twice a year, probably would be silly to have them come every year to, to give a report, but but it does need to be at some regularity, whatever that might be. You know, we do, we do get these reports during budget season, but I don't think we get a report from our airport advisory committee, we never have, that I know of, so. But, but I, but I do think that's something that, that ought to be listed in that, in that ordinance. And the regularity is probably up for discussion, you know, how, how often.
Biannually or something?
Definitely should be consistent with our other committees.
I think if we got an update from every committee every year, it'd be that would be really cumbersome, but it's a good provision, however, whatever that interval is. The other question was if this starts the committee appointment and the membership from scratch.
And yeah, so we're kind of looking at that, we're talking through that, but the feeling right now is yes, it does, is basically because of sunset, there, there is no committee. So all appointments and everything that we will be following up with, we'll need to start over.
This is kind of an, maybe an awkward question, but if it was never intended to be short term, how did we allow it to expire? Was it just sort of an oversight, something that we just, oops, it expired, or? I don't know.
No, it, it was, it just, it's something, it was caught earlier in the year, and we just failed to follow up on it, it was a, it was on our part that we didn't, we didn't get this to you sooner.
I don't know, so I don't really hear consensus whether we want to keep a date in there or eliminate the date, but have some kind of requirement about a report.
I'd, I'd throw out, you know, a, a biannual report, I think is an appropriate thing, I don't think it needs to be lengthy, doesn't need to be overly onerous, but I think every two years would probably be a good idea.
I, I'm, I'm okay with that as well, I feel like if we have a report of, on whether it's every other year, that would be, that seems appropriate.
I'm fine with that.
I just, again, I think it should be consistent across all our committees, so I don't know, but if we could look into
I think most of them are three years, so every three years they
But they have a sunset clause in them?
Have a sunset date.
Yeah, they have sunset clauses, they usually run for three years, so at the end of three years that they give their report, and then get the, the recertification or the re-extent, the extension.
One thought just occurred to me, you know, we, we have joint sessions with the Planning Commission, and they don't, they don't have a sunset. But that's how we, you know, kind of have a meeting with them every so often. Because I think we, I think it's beneficial to both of us, if we, if we do have those joint sessions, and maybe this is one of those that that we try to do a joint session with every once in a while, just to, just to hear from them, just to know what they know, just, just to see how they're doing what they do. It might be well for them to have that same, you know, shoulder rubbing with us so that they kind of know that the city council likes this direction, you know, so they could kind of and I think that's why the Planning Commission thing works, is because the Planning Commission can kind of feel an overall direction from, from these joint sessions.
I, I wonder, the only thing that I was wondering about that is I thought that they were having a little trouble having a quorum all the time, so I don't know. You know, their schedules might limit that ability too, I don't know. Or just have a chair and vice chair. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi, you have a comment about this?
I do, I had to step out to take a call about our bonds, but the, the ordinance requires now that there's just two annual meetings, they, we've met that the last couple of years, although what's this present?
Yeah.
Thank you. We've met that the last couple of years, even though it has been difficult to get a quorum, that it has, it has met that minimum standard. And so even though there is a date and that date has transpired, I think the recommendation is that we avoid that from happening in the future by just removing that date from the ordinance and allowing this committee to persist until such time that the mayor chooses not to. That's the proposal. There's also a requirement in the ordinance already that, that the committee support or submit an annual written report.
There's also a requirement in the ordinance already that, that the committee support or submitted annual written report. The council and the mayor.
Section L eight or something.
Yeah, but if the council desires a in-person report, that could be accommodated too.
So this is actually a recommendation to further entrench the committee, not less, right? It's an important committee. And with the sunset dates and committees that we have no intention of, of wanting to sunset. It, it really doesn't provide any benefit to us. The committee members have terms, they cycle through, there's requirements for where the committee members can live and, and those kind of things. What qualifications they need to have. So by having a sunset date, it just trips us up in ways that we're not intended to be tripped up in. So.
So where you're starting over, are you going to stagger the, the terms of the, the new committee members?
They would still be staggered, yes.
We're still talking about keeping those who want to be kept though, right?
That would be decision of the mayor, so we would talk about that.
See, okay.
But because it has expired and by renewing it with no sunset, which is what the recommendation is. Then that resets all the committee members. So all the committee members would need to be replaced. And obviously, if there's some on the committee now that want to continue to serve, they would make that known and that would be the choice of the new mayor.
I'm making sure like you're not here.
I gotta admit, it's super weird.
Yeah. I look at, I, he's, he's right there. Right there.
Yeah, I mean, and just to, I guess to forecast and the discussions I've had in with administration is that I'll be looking for people that are collaborative in nature. We've got to get to a point where we've got a, a mix of aeronautic expertise and economic development expertise. And, and with people that can work together in a collaborative way. So that they're giving us some sort of, you know, giving us a mechanism for input without having battles internally, you know what I mean? So will we looking for people that want to work in that spirit? That have credibility across the line, around, around the airport community and with administration in the community at large, et cetera.
There, there is one issue that we've had in the past that, that you need to be aware of. Just I'm going to talk to another guy who's, who's going to matter, it's going to matter too is is conflict of interest. These guys need to be able to vote on things and they need to be able to do without a conflict of interest. And tenants, they're often in a conflict of interest. And making, making a, a vote really hard for them. I think we had that a lot in the past. So to, to kind of get away from, from that type of a, they do need to have input. Certainly, but, and I, I, you know, in, in my perfect world, I think it, it works well if, if they do have a I don't even know what to call it, but a, you know, a, a kind of a quasi-committee that reports to the airport committee. You know what I mean?
So I've been reflecting on that, actually. It's a, it's a fair and important point. And if you, if you took a person, you could call it a conflict of interest or you can call it a stakeholder. I think stakeholders are really important. What I've also learned is that there's a lot of different types of stakeholders at the airport. And so if we selected a committee that came from one particular set of stakeholders, like a, a tenant for a hangar. And we populated the entire committee, that to me looks like a conflict for that one user type. But if we were really deliberate in who we selected, not just for the collaborative spirit, but to make sure that they represent somewhat evenly, those broad mix of stakeholder types, I think it really dilutes that conflict concern. Especially when we're talking about an advisory committee that reviews things and gives us advice. So that you as a body can decide. So I, I think we need to really be really thoughtful in that regard as we select who we recommend for a membership.
We'll have two of the stakeholder group, two of that, and not have it named, but they're like, oh, this is kind of making the mix. I like that idea. Because I was thinking about that too, because I mean, sometimes we have conflict of interest because we gain financially directly from something or, you know, this position. But I guess I am feeling the same way as if they're businesses and they're people that own hangers. And it'd be hard not to have a conflict, but they are there to advocate for that role, right? But they just can't outnumber everybody else.
Yeah, your point is, your point is, is good, but you know, I mean, I know if I have a conflict of interest. Sometimes maybe you don't, but I do. And, and I need to be aware of it enough to where I realize this is not appropriate for me to vote on this, you know, and declare it. And, and, and not do the vote. But we also don't want to make, we want to make sure that there isn't so many of those that could happen on any one particular issue. That we don't have a quorum able to vote.
Yeah, and at the same time, making sure that that stakeholder group is listened to and represented in their interest.
Sure.
On the committee, right? So.
So I have a question. At, at one point in time, we, and I think we have Davis County in here for a reason. We were looking at, at a larger catchment because we were going to use Davis County as part of our regional plan. Is that still the case?
When we approached Davis County Commissioners a number of years ago about this regional approach tied to maybe an airport authority in terms of its management, they wholly declined. And that was largely because they, they realized that they would, they already receive all the benefits of the airport with none of the cost. As does Weber County in the current configuration. So, so the regional nature of the airport is super significant. How that can be applied to other stakeholders, we, they're going to have to decide how that happens. So I, I would recommend leaving that broad language in there to give us the flexibility we would need. Because I think hopefully someday in the future, people will start to realize that the airport is a regional asset.
I guess where I'm where Ogden City mostly pays for the, the, the airport at this point. I, I'm not sure that I would want to be soliciting people from Davis County at this point unless they are all in. And if they're all in, we can always change. I, I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at it a little bit.
So you're taking a more narrow.
Appointment.
Yep, and then saying if, if there need arises to include a broader group of stakeholders, then we amend the ordinance to allow for that. Do I understand that right?
Yeah, that's what, yes.
They also could fit into C and be living in Davis County. They could be a representative, you know, business aviation interests, et cetera. I'm just saying, so you could remove Davis County and they could still get, put in there, right? Or they would have to have all of those things, the under twenty year resident.
All.
Yeah, sham, mhm, would be all of them.
I just, I don't, I, I know the reason why we put it in the last.
Okay, well, it seems like.
Because we were hoping to build a regional support for regional airport.
Through Airport Authority.
Yeah, put an airport authority together that they were a part of.
Pretty sure you were here when you talked about.
Yeah, you were absolutely right, though, that they're all, they all get the benefit and they just don't see the point in paying the money at this point. They're well happy to let us pay the money and still get the benefit. Yeah, even though, even Weber County.
Well, they do partner with, with us on the CRA.
They do, yep. And so they, they share in some expense. That's a really good point.
Anyway, and so I don't hear clear direction at this time. Do you want to each give some feedback and then bring back a book session next week or something? It sounds like we have a lot of different ideas. We want to know how it compares to other or, our committees.
No, I, I mean, I just think we should be looking at that. I mean, I don't think we should, I mean, I don't want to hold this up just because of that. I just think that we should be consistent across how we built, how we're doing our committees.
I think we could probably find a consensus here. I, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'm hearing, nobody, nobody's concerned about removing the sunset clause.
Right.
Okay.
So that's not the issue. There's already a reporting requirement. Thanks for reminding us of that, Councilmember Nadolski. So if there's other things that you want changed, maybe we can deal with this now. And we can put that on our list of things to deal with later.
And that might come more clear to the group as we talk about committee appointments.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just for full disclosure, stepping out of one, we're, we're rolling into another one. A little awkward at the moment.
That's going to be the whole night, so there you go.
Yeah, my calendar is already populating with meeting requests and interviews for potential members of the committee. What's really important right now to me is that we are clearly showing that this committee is going to be established, that we are going to fill it, the vacancies and reestablish it, how we're going to do it and so on. I don't think we need to be in a light speed hurry to, to change it and fix the sunset. But we do need people to know that this is in the works, that it's a priority. I mean, I, I don't think I'm going to have to take this much of a role in all the committees. There's a lot of them. But this one's just so hot. It's right out of the gate, day one. So it's in the works. Actually, the input so far from you guys is pretty helpful because we'll probably be back pretty quick. Maybe with additional revisions to the ordinance and then appointments, so.
Yeah, again, the premise of this recommendation is that this is a committee that we feel like should not have a sunset unless it's a deliberate action by the mayor to do so. And that's just going to solve this procedural process of having to, to, to renew it and those kind of things. So it's an affirmation.
Great. Thanks so much, Jared.
Thank you.
Right, Jeanine, I mean, we have about fifteen, well, thirteen minutes for your council.
Mine will take thirty seconds. I didn't even put together a presentation because the, the only proposed changes are to move the election of leadership to the first week in February as opposed to the first week in January. And then to move the committee appointments back from January to December. So committee appointments will be happening this month if you adopt these, these recommendations. And then elections for leadership won't occur until February. There was one line in there that somehow didn't get removed with the last revision. So it also takes out one line that references the interest form. That, those are the proposed changes.
Any concerns about that? And then we got a chance to look at the committees that are available. If you'd like to let us know which ones you'd like to be appointed to, then we'll ask Sean and Dave, you know, which ones they might be interested in that are left.
And I actually haven't sent that out to the full group, so I'll send those out to you. Soon. I wanted to talk to Sean and Dave first just to make them aware and then, so.
Great. Going to pull up this flash vote survey. Do you want me to go? Oh, sure. Okay, so this survey, as you all know, went out. And I, the point of the survey, I think we should just kind of preface that and Jeanine might have more information to share too. Is, you know, this survey tool is not meant to be like a representative of the whole city necessarily. It's just a quick snapshot asking residents that are on a member panel specifically about different issues. So in this case, it was about the snowplow ordinance and issues. And then when you share it more broadly, then other people also can respond, but then we can separate it by these filters over here. And I was messing around with the municipal districts earlier, but if you look at all responses, you can see that three hundred twenty-six people participated in the survey. And right here below, you can see two hundred fifty of the four hundred fifty-seven initially invited. So it was about fifty-five percent response rate of the panel, the member panel, which can continue to grow. Kevin from Flash Road said that some cities have six thousand people on their panel or something like that. So these are people that just signed up to participate and can participate at any time on any issues. They don't have one issue that they're particularly interested in. They're just willing to answer some responses on these things. And then the other people, the seventy-six others, are the ones that just responded this time. But then they could be added to the panel if they were willing to do so. Some people were, we got at least one response of people that were concerned about responding through this tool. Because they're a little bit worried about how their data would be shared or who's holding their data, which I understand is a completely valid concern. But Kevin reassured us that they do not sell information to anybody else. They store your information completely. And they don't share with us individual information. We just get it all aggregated, right? So if anybody has concerns about that, you don't have to worry about that. I actually responded as well, but I tried to stay somewhat neutral so I didn't mess up the results at all. And so you can do it too, so you can see. And you immediately get, when it closes, the participants actually get this back. So they can see all the responses, which I really love because sometimes you take surveys and you never know what happens to the information. You don't know how it's being utilized. So I thought that was really cool to have that in my email box as soon as it closed. So you can see that we only have a few questions here. The first question, you know, obviously it's about in the last twelve months, how often have you or your household parked one or more cars on your street overnight? You can see that three hundred twenty-six people responded to this, which is nice. And so this is just everybody together, but then we can disaggregate this in, in other categories, which I'll show you in a second. And you can also, I'm a little troubled with this mouse on my pad, but you can go to a table view here too, which is nice. I like this because you can see the actual numbers. But you can also scroll over the responses and kind of get it repeated for you too. So you can kind of see the information there. So you can see out of all the three hundred twenty-six, never, almost never was a huge portion of that, right? So over fifty percent, somewhere occasionally, regularly is twenty-five point two percent. And then nobody said not sure. So as you go down, you can understand that a little bit better. Because then it's asking about if we could improve the snow removal, increase safety in the community. Which one of these things, or what is more important to you, where you live? So, you know, out of the whole group, being able to park a car on my street was pretty low, but then having better snow removal on my street was really high. I'll just go through these quickly because I want to get to the disaggregating part, because that's where I really find a lot of fun information. This was a really great one where it gave all these different options and you could choose up to three. So if you keep that in mind, some people would have, may have chosen more than one of these options. It is hard to see what they say, but you can, again, just hover over and then see this. So I'll just move that away so you can see. So you can see only two hundred ninety-six people responded to this answer. And so you have about twenty-five percent saying no parking from two AM to six AM, just between these dates. When significant snow is forecast, we have about thirty-three percent. Only when it's snowing or within twenty-four hours after the snowstorm, forty-four point nine percent. Limited to one side. And those different categories, so you can kind of see those. And I know I'm going quickly, but I know we're running out of time, so I just want to go down. So none of these really work or other. So in other, there's twenty-six votes there. And the way that they give us that information back is basically with this word bubble, right? So you can see the big things that people talked about, but also you can just look at all the responses. Which in this case is kind of fun because people said, hey, stop putting snow into my driveway or whatever. But some of the others are, you know, really, you know, are really good. So if no street parking allowed, please do not issue citations for parking over sidewalk. Well, that makes sense because if we're asking people to move out of the street, maybe we need to have a little bit more leeway there. So I thought these comments were really good, generally, some of them were kind of funny. If you're required to move your car off the street, where would you move it? So this was really helpful. You know, most, the majority of people could move it onto their driveway or their property. And then some of these other options, thirteen percent said, I don't really have a place to move my car. I don't have a car. I never parked on the street, not sure. And then other, and then you can see the other categories here too. And then other comments. So this was really amazing. I think there's about seventy, oh, there's a hundred and nine responses here. So you can read through those at your leisure and look through them and see what the comments are. Like I said, some of them are like, hey, just don't put the snow on my driveway, which is not really what we're asking them about. But they like to give us that feedback, but there's a lot of really great comments there. But the thing that I really wanted to look at, based on these responses, is this filter. Because I think before somebody had said, well, what percentage will make you feel good about the current ordinance as it's written? It's like, well, I don't really know, but I do know that I feel like, just from my own personal experience, downtown is very different than everywhere else in the city. And so I did feel a little vindicated because if you go to municipal districts, which is a great way to sort. You know, it shows our districts and this is based on the address that people put in. You can see there's a very different response here when you ask, how often have you parked on the street? So District One, only twenty percent of people said never. Whereas District Four, sixty-three percent of people said never, right? Just based on the neighborhood occasionally, and then regularly, you can see how that flips. How in District One in particular, a lot more people are parking on the street. How in District One in particular, a lot more people are parking on the street. It doesn't mean that they don't have the ability to park in their driveway, but they... And then you can see the differences here as well. And then here, I really appreciate this because this is very different based on which district we're looking at. So for example, here, fifty-four percent for District Two up in the north, they're saying, I'd really like no street parking only when it's snowing or within twenty-four hours after the snowstorm. That's pretty popular for District Three as well. Any of these are fine, also District Two said, so you never know, who knows what. So that was really helpful for me to see that, you know, this could impact different parts of the city in different ways. But then also you can sort based on the age of the person. So this is kind of interesting, which was not too shocking if you start to look at this. Seventy percent of people over sixty-one almost never park on the street. And that's for a variety of reasons, probably because of where they live, et cetera, but they probably would rather park in the driveway or in their garage. Thirty and under regularly, right? So are parking more regularly. And then I'm just gonna say, this one too is kind of a big difference, right? That the older folks having better snow removal on their street is much more important to them than maybe younger people. And then these choices too. So right here, District One is saying no street parking only when it's snowing or within twenty-four hours after a snowstorm. And this is thirty and under. So those people that are younger would prefer that. So that's another way to look at it. And then the one category, you can sort by any of these categories. You can also just look at the member panel, which is interesting, or by gender. I was looking at this residency one, and so they're actually looking into this a little bit more because I was concerned, I didn't understand what residency versus non-residency meant. So they're saying by this, the way it's totaled now, fifty-nine of the one hundred four votes is saying they're non-residents. So a staff member was just telling me like they responded to this, but it doesn't mean maybe they do park their car in Ogden sometimes, but they're not living in that residence in that area. So they're gonna look into this a little bit more because I thought that was kind of a pretty high amount of people that would be non-residents, but they'll let us know more about with that. So I know we have to go in about two minutes. Is there any questions? I mean, you can all look through it and see what you think about the results too. Sure, I thought it was a cool way to try out this because we can utilize this for all different kinds of issues.
So based on this information, is there anything that you want to change about the proposed ordinance that the administration has put forward?
I think you all know my opinion, but I'll let you talk.
I think I'd like to hear from the administration about why their intent was to make it from November first, end of March, you know, whatever it was. All, every night, whether it's, whether snow is predicted or not. I think it's a lot more justifiable if we say, well, okay, if we're expecting a snowstorm, then it, then it, yeah, you gotta get your car out the road. But if you're not expecting snow, I don't know what the justification is. I'm just kind of curious this time.
Well, for me, it's a challenge, like thinking about, was it last weekend or the weekend prior? There was forecast snow the whole weekend, but down in District One, we didn't really have any snowfall. So that would mean we'd have all these people moving their cars with like, you know, barely anything on the ground whatsoever, when maybe that wasn't really necessary, so.
I think maybe if we can have a chance to review these a little bit more and then come back and have another discussion.
Maybe invite the administration back to talk a little bit more about what they're thinking was.
So then I have another quick question too, and it may be exploring this. You know, the odd even is great in maybe residential areas, but are there certain emergency arterials that we should ban them all together? And that those individuals need to park on a side street or a residential street?
I was thinking about that about even twenty fifth with the bus, you know, and everything. I was thinking like, yeah, maybe that's...
Did that be an emergency arterial that no one can park on either side? I don't know if there's, if we've looked at the, and I don't know the answer.
I liked your reminder from South Ogden that came in. I thought, that sounds like that's workable. That sounded like a pretty reasonable approach.
Which one was that? I can't remember.
It was in the thread that we all got.
Yeah, they just had sent out their ordinance as a reminder. And so as a business owner over there, I got a notice and so I just shared that in our group.
There was another newspaper article, I think Marcia noted it. It was a February two thousand twenty-two article from the Tribune that talked about all the...
We had it in there, yeah, all the differences. The Provo does that where, and they have the huge college, you know, college student population too. They have the routes. So they have the snow routes that people can't park on. So that might be...
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, maybe a recommendation for District One. I don't know, I just think it's different in different parts of the city. And I know that there's some streets that we pointed out and that I would love to see them on a map to see. I mean, I could just go around and take pictures in my neighborhood, just walk in the dogs and say, I don't know what these people are gonna do at this particular house because there's, you know, so many people living there and, or whatever, you know. So maybe another work session for it next week instead of having it on the main agenda?
I think there is some pressure to get an ordinance passed, though. I mean, winter's coming on, so.
That's true, although we've never had the ordinance before, so.
Yeah, well, we've had an ordinance that we've never really done much with. That's the thing, and I kind of sensing from these results that people would like to have something to count on. So I think we ought to do whatever we're gonna do and then get on with it.
I don't see these being able to disaggregate by income, right? Income levels?
No, that's not a question.
Right, okay. And probably Spanish speaking, I'm assuming?
It was available in Spanish, but they don't give us the results in Spanish. So I don't know how many people took it in Spanish. I don't think they were able to tell us the way that it gets distributed. They can take it in Spanish, but we don't know how many people.
My whole argument from the beginning when I had some concerns about these was to give us a little bit of time to make the right decisions so that we can have the least amount of impact on the community. I was, I agree that if this is important, that it needs to be passed, it needs to be passed. I agree a hundred percent. But I don't understand why we have to rush something, whether if in the past we didn't have an ordinance or if we had something that we didn't enforce and that's been happening for decades and decades. Why do we have to ram something without just doing our due diligence to have the least amount of impact possible in the community? That's my take on it.
That was my understanding too. They weren't going to be very explicit about enforcing to begin with, so I guess I don't feel too bad about just taking another little bit of time. But, I mean, obviously, I'm not the one in charge. Well, I mean, you know what I'm saying, I am, but I want to make sure I respect everybody's wishes. I'm not gonna hold it up just because I disagree with the policy overall. I have some things I'd like to change about it, so if I could, you know, maybe I can articulate those next week a little bit better and then see if you all agree or not. And then also we could hear from the administration about some of these issues. That would be good.
We are not the only city that gets snow. I'm sure there are other ordinances out there we can look at.
Yeah. And that was just my kind of argument too, is that I know we're comparing to some cities around us, but our population is much larger. And we have even put in some policies recently to get rid of parking standards. So we're gonna have apartment buildings and different businesses that will not be prepared for dealing with this. And I was just over trying to count parking spots at the golden hours the other day. So I'm like, well, how many people from my neighborhood will need to park there when this is happening? Because we said that that was an option. Or is it the library where we get to park? You know, it's gonna be a huge impact on my neighborhood, but, you know, that's the only people I can speak for. Just walking around.
No, I think a work session again makes sense. We've had time to look at this. We've had the survey results for two weeks now, so plenty of time to review and dig into those and talk to community members and people in our districts and our areas. So hopefully we'll all be ready to parse a little bit more next week.
Yeah, thank you all. We better get to this reception.
I was just gonna say, in the spirit of Rich's previous comment, I'm staying quiet because I have a conflict of interest.
You don't know what side of the road you're on right now. You don't know what you're doing.
Hey, just say something, say something here and then come and say to here, say something sitting here. That's all.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Let's go ahead and go celebrate. Let's go have a reception and then we'll meet at six o'clock in the public room.